I would like to call to order now the regular city council meeting Monday, September the ninth, six o'clock. And at this time, I will call on the pastor Scott Hungley of the First St. John Methodist Church to deliver our invocation, which will be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I have been Presbyterian in Cheriville, but now I'm Lutheran. I'm not Methodist yet. Just kidding. But there's always hope. I'm still young. I'm still young. I've got another chance for another career, maybe. That's okay. No problem. Let us pray. Oh, sorry. Yes, let us pray. Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we give you thanks. We thank you for the gift of laughter. And we thank you, Lord, that you bring us together and that you brought this group together today as, as, as meeting with the Cheriville City Council. Lord, we thank you that you have made us a part of, of Cheriville, that you brought us here to this place. And we pray, Lord, that you would be with this council as they meet and all the folks here as they bring their business to the council. We pray that you would guide them and that you would allow your Holy Spirit to show them the will you have for this community, for Cheriville, and for the surrounding community, and that you would remind us all that you're always with us. Lord, we pray that you be with the mayor, H.L. Bean. We pray that you would shower him with your healing spirit, with your life-giving love, and we pray that you would help him to recuperate quickly and, and be able to, to be back in his position. We pray, Lord, this day, that you be with each of us, that you would see us to good health, that you would watch over us and guide us. But most importantly, Lord, we pray that you would assure each of us that you are our Savior, that you are with us now and always will be, and that we can place all our trust and our hope in you. Lord, we pray for the United States of America. And we pray, Lord, that as we continue into this election cycle, that you would be with each of us, that you would guide us and show us the will you have for our nation, for this community, and for the world. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Everyone will be seated. At this time, I'll ask the council to please look at the agenda and give your approval.
Make a motion to approve the gen- the agenda as presented?
Second. I'm in favor. All right. The next thing is the approval of our minutes, the city council regular meeting of August fifteenth and closed session meeting of August fifteenth. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve both sets of minutes, A, from the city council regular meeting, and B, for our closed session meeting.
I'm in favor. Okay. At this time, it's Mayor Pro Tem's comments. And the only comments that I do have at this moment is that we did have the mayor here at our life council meeting, and he attended the MPO meeting in Gastonia with me, did a great job there. He was called on to have to conduct that meeting. But as you all know, he just recently had surgery last week, and it was much overdue. So right now, he is home covering and still in need of our prayers. So if you will, please continue to keep Mayor Bean in your prayers. At this time, I'll call on the representatives for the presentation of the chair from the Chair of ABC Board. Which one will...
Thank you. I'm James Beam. I'm the chairman of the Chair of ABC Board. And with me tonight is the board, Tim Moss, board member, Gail Jenkins, board member, and Alan Freely, store manager. So we had another outstanding year. We had revenues of over $1,690,000. As y'all know, in the previous fiscal year, we'd given the check up to thirty, we'd given $30,000. Tonight, we have a check for an additional $20,000. This is the largest donation that's ever come from the, from the ABC store. So if you include the Chair of Law Enforcement, $6,000, that's $56,000 for fiscal year last year. So Tim's going to go over what the ABC store has done throughout the years.
Thank you. I appreciate that, James. I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to serve on this board. I'm really proud of the direction we've had. We've been, we never knew that a pandemic would cause so much many people to drink so much liquor. But it has been a many, many life changer for the city of Cheriville also. But I thank you guys, and I thank the board that I served with. I think they do a very good, and our general manager is unbelievable how he goes out and sells, which you can't advertise selling, but he does a really good job of that. For the year of this year, with that check tonight, that'll be a total of $50,000, a distribution of profit until our city law enforcement, another $6,000. The total distribution of profit to the city from 1982 to date is $1,076,00486. Excuse me. One million. These numbers are big for me. 1-0-7-6-4-8-6. Excuse me. Total distribution of profit to city law enforcement has been $214,800. Total distribution of the Chair of ABC since 1982, $1,291,286. Excuse me. Not $291,286. Estimated revenue from beer and wine for the year of '23 and '24 is $30,000. The total estimated beer and wine revenue since 1982 is $700,000. And the total revenue from the ABC system since 1982 is $1,991,286. So that's pretty good for a small town like us. And we're very honored and happy to be able to, you know, present y'all with this check today. Y'all want to clap? You can. Mayor Pro Tem, city council, as you know, first of all, let me say I'm going to brag on this board a little bit. Several years back during COVID, we had a lot of leaks. And, you know, we had had some pricing. And because of COVID and, and supply chain issues, we were looking at well over $100,000 to put on a new roof. At the time, we had about $74,000. And, you know, our board made a decision at that point to do some needed repairs. And we spent about $7,000. And this, and your city council was gracious enough to allow us to continue to put back $7,000 a year to get where the point we needed to be able to put a new roof on. But the fact that we waited then and didn't do it, we have a quote in hand that my board has told me to execute this week. And you're going to love this. Because of waiting and because of them needing work, and this is a very reputable company. They've been in business 120 years. They're out of Charlotte, and they've done many, many roofs and commercial industrial roofs. And they came to us with a quote of $56,000. And not to exceed like 58.5, another 2,500 potentially materials once they take off the roof that they could have to replace and stuff that's unseen. The good news is, we've got $93,000 in that account right now. So we're going to have a big savings, which, what does that mean to the city of Cheriville? That means that as soon as we get this roof on and we get it paid for, we're going to be bringing you another check for about $30,000 more. Somewhere between 30 and 40, depending on how it works out. And that, that check will be coming real soon. But I just want to thank you guys for your continued support of the store. And, you know, look forward to having another record-breaking year this year. Thank you.
Any questions?
I got a church meeting I have to go to.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, so.
We can't think with this.
So basically, basically, we've allowed them to put back money every year to put this roof. Thought it was going to be $100,000. They were going to do the $100,000, waited. The prices dropped down to 56. Well, y'all, they can't keep that money. So once they pay out that 56, they have to pay the rest back to us, which is going to be another 30, 40,000. Who knows?
They'll do it immediately, so the roof's paid for.
That's very true.
So they've already broken the record for the most ever given to the city. It's getting ready to almost double.
And we're off to another good start.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have is the special recognition of our city employees. So I'll ask Nathan Bowman here. Is he in the kitchen?
Send him out. Come on down, Nathan.
Nathan, do you have any family you want to come?
Come on, Hannah.
Bring them with you.
Come on, Hannah. Get your picture in the paper.
All right. I'm going to bring them there. Nathan, this is in recognition for your 10 years of service to the city of Cheriville. Not only do we recognize you, but you're a mate there because the wives have put in the time also. When you have a husband that serves as one of our frontline defense, also just like our police, our fire department, y'all were the first responders, first on scenes and everything. And I know as being a first responder myself for 26 years, you give up a lot, a lot of meals, a lot of other things that goes on, family functions. So we appreciate your letting him do what he loves doing. Okay? And this is our thank you to you. All right. The next will be Brandon Parker. Got your family coming with you, Brandon?
Yeah.
Okay. Chief, do you want to come up and be ready as part of this? Brandon, this is in recognition of 20 years. You've been with us a long time, and we really appreciate it. And we appreciate your family. As I was telling Nathan, I know the things that you've had to give up. Because, you know, my husband was in service. I mean, you had a job. If holidays fall on your day to work, you had to be there. So you have been an asset to Cheriville for 20 years. So this is in recognition of your 20 years. So we'll let them get it. You're not leaving us yet. This is a special recognition from the North Carolina Department of Justice Criminal Justice Standards Division. Dear Jonathan Parker, the Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission recently met in regular session and accepted the nominations of those candidates qualified to receive the law enforcement officer's advanced certification and the criminal justice officer's advanced certificate. After examination of your credentials, the commission unanimously approved issuance of the advanced certificate to you. Congratulations on this great achievement. The advanced certificate award provides recognition of the competence and achievements of eligible officers across the state. This award requires substantive professional experience, many hours of additional training, and offer often a higher level of formal education. To meet these requirements is a feat worthy of commendation. Your dedication to your chosen profession is evidenced in the fact that you are one of the very select group of officers to receive this honor. It is with great pride that I offer you congratulations on the attainment of this most significant award. Congratulations again. I look forward to witnessing your continued success. Sincerely, Jeffries, my director.
I want to add just a little bit to that. With this, it takes a minimum of nine years service in law for you. But not only does it take that nine years of service, it takes hours upon hours of extra education and extra training. Captain Parker has over 1,000 of those extra hours. So he has dedicated his time. He's taken time away from his family to go and get those classes and to do that. So for that, Brandon, thank you.
I don't think we're related, you know. I was a part of that. I thank you.
Keep your mouth shut.
I really appreciate it for you.
Congratulations, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my dear.
Yes, he is.
Okay. Okay. At this time, I would like to call Athletic Director Matt Powers to come forward for the recognition of the Chair of High School Power Players.
Thank you again, guys, for having us. We enjoyed this last month. Like I said, we're going to make this a monthly occurrence. First of all, we're going to do things a little different this time with our power players. Like some of you know, I've said, if I'm the face, we have a problem. So I want you to get to know all of the folks that are part of our programs. So from this point forward, we'll have our coaches introduce their players as the power players so that you can see the coaches that are putting their time into these athletes, and we can celebrate their successes. The first power player is going to be one of our volleyball players, and head coach Lee Kaiser will introduce her.
Thank you so much. My power player is Jenna Anthony. She's a junior at the Chair of High School on the volleyball team. She plays middle. She also plays softball. There's three reasons why I chose Jenna for this award. First, Jenna is a very reliable athlete. She's always at every workout, and even during the summer workout, she was there to improve her game. She is very dependable and always doing over and beyond what is asked of her. In that respect, she shows off her leadership skills by leading by example. She is the first one in the gym and the last one to leave. Jenna is our most improved player overall. She chose to play club volleyball, which is in the offseason you play, so you can play all year round. And she worked extremely hard to perfect her skill in the offseason. And this earned her, her starting spot on the varsity.
Our second power player, come on up. He is one of our cross-country runners. And he is coached by our men's cross-country coach, Coach Antonio Griggs, but it's, it's a team effort. Our women's coach, Ms. Callie Cook.
All right. So our Piedmont power player is going to be Mr. Stephen Wyatt. He's a cross-country and track runner at CHS. And he also is an elite swimmer in the state of North Carolina. Again, as he said, I'm Coach Griggs and this is Coach Cook. I meant to say that. All right. So Stephen is a junior. And the reason why we chose Stephen for this award is it's his second year competing in cross-country. He has emerged as one of the top runners in the area. Number two, Stephen recently achieved his first ever win by taking first place at the Forest Invitational in Gastonia. And we were the only 1A school there, and he took first place. And then the third reason is as a student athlete, Stephen stands out in the classroom. Right now, he has a GPA of 4.2. And Stephen is a returning member of our cross-country team, and he takes leadership positions, participating in the guise of runners, doing practice sessions and workouts, and earning the respect of Coach Griggs and Coach Cook. You got something you want to say?
He's an awesome kid, and we are just honored to be here and stand in his shadow. So congrats, Stephen.
We again want to thank Piedmont Lithium and Emily Winter. They're the ones that sponsor this award for us. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Miss Rogers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right. The next thing that we have on our agenda is, we have a resolution that I'm going to be reading. And I'm going to call Mr. Andy West to come forward.
Any family members too can come, if y'all want to come up?
If you'd like family members to come to be here with you. And then we're going to be calling. Andy, this is indeed an honor. It really is. I'm telling you, I don't want to care about where we, how far we go back, but we're so proud of you. This resolution of appreciation is honoring you tonight. Whereas Andy West grew up in Cheriville, where he was a student leader, an athlete at Chair of High School before graduating from the University of North Carolina, and then later earning an MBA from Syracuse and leading a life of distinguished achievement and of service to his nation and to his hometown. And whereas Andy West served with distinction as a US Army officer for 22 years while serving the nation in many high-level worldwide assignments, including at the Pentagon, while earning high praise from multiple senior officers and retiring as a highly decorated lieutenant colonel to become one of Cheriville's most distinguished veterans. And whereas Andy West served as a high-profile business executive and partner in several nationwide firms while ultimately choosing to base in Cheriville and to use his own executive leadership skills to make an indelible mark on his hometown for generations to come. And whereas Andy West helped establish and chair the Chair of Audit Committee, which helped restore faith in the financial integrity of the city's operations following a period of intense media scrutiny and public distrust, and which led the city to recoup many funds and earn a statewide award for its efforts. And whereas Andy West was a tenacious early driving force behind and the first chairman of the Chair of Main Street Program, the impact of which is seen every day in downtown Cheriville as downtown continues to blossom more each year thanks to the firm foundation he laid. And where downtown's designation on the NRHP, as well as its gleaming streetscape, booming construction, new businesses, colorful murals, booming flowers, and growing excitement all bear witness to his lasting legacy. And whereas Andy West was recognized statewide as a North Carolina Main Street champion, having propelled Cheriville's program from its inception to it quickly being recognized as being one of the best in the state and to being accredited nationally. And whereas Andy West collaboratively engaged city leaders, citizens, donors, organizations, business, and entrepreneurs to meticulously build an award-winning program around outstanding strategic planning, organization structure, work plan, public relations, branding, land use, and streetscape design. And whereas Andy West served in many different leadership positions in local government organizations over time to include these and others, the Chair of Rotary Club, Chair of Community Development Corporation, St. John's Lutheran Church, Gaston Vision 2020, and the Piedmont Council of Boy Scouts, and was in addition rightly recognized as the 2015 Citizen of the Year by the Chair of Chamber of Commerce. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Cheriville hereby gratefully records and extends the appreciation of the entire community to Andrew C. West for faithful and excellent service to the nation and to the city. This his 75th birthday and the 31st day of August, 2024, signed by Paige Green, our municipal clerk, city clerk there, and H.L. Bean, the mayor. Okay. We've got one more thing. City Manager Ron Dalton, Ben Blackman, Richard, and myself here. I need y'all back from the lock. Is there anyone else that was here? David Kaiser, weren't you on the board when we started our Main Street Program? Come out here. We can at least say, we can attest to the fact that we were all here when you took the reins of the Main Street Program. And you know, they liked it so good. The man can write a plan for anything. And North Carolina even adopted your plan as the, what should be done for all Main Streets. That's how well he was thought of in what he did. So we can't say enough about it. So we have one other thing here for you, and it's the key to the city, is being presented to Andrew C. West for your faithful and excellent service to our community. I can remember sitting over there on the other side when we started this program, I mean, from scratch. We didn't know anything about it. Richard come in here and brought, what was the lady's name? Asher Adams from Asheville. She met with us, I don't know how many days. But as you can see, what's going on downtown, what has happened in our downtown, it came from your guidance, your dream, putting it out there on paper. So you have a legacy here, and we appreciate you. And all of us were part of that.
It was a team effort. It was definitely a team effort.
It was great.
Great.
Did you get all you needed, especially?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Yes, you were there really much. Your dad's a great guy.
Appreciate it.
I've been so.
Andy, I'm just sorry I couldn't be on the council when you were doing all this great work. And thank you so, so much.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
So good to see you. Thank you.
Okay. The AR members would like to come forward. Okay. We have a special proclamation for you ladies from Constitution Week. Whereas September 17, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration. to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, condening September the 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Henry Lee Bing, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Cheriville and the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of September the 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties. Remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Cheriville to be affixed this ninth day of September of the year of our Lord 2024. Paige Green, municipal city clerk, HOB mayor.
Yes. Uh, we are members of the Daughters of American Revolution, the Trine Resolves Chapter. And this is, uh, all these ladies that are standing here with me can trace their ancestry back to the American Revolution War. So we promote patriotism in our country. And if you'll look on Main Street, had you traveled down Main Street, we have put a display there commemorating the Constitution and Betsy Ross with our flag. So be sure and drive by and look at it. And we thank you very much. Thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Okay, this time we have a presentation from Ripple Fiber regarding construction. Who is here to represent him? Okay, you'll come forward.
Good evening. My name's Bobby Gilbert. I am the Senior Vice President of Public Affairs from Ripple Fiber. And the reason why we're here this evening is because we currently have a project in the city of Cheriville that started last week. So we've had the opportunity to come this evening and introduce our company to you and allow you to answer or ask any questions that you may have this evening. So. Ripple Fiber is a fiber broadband company out of Charlotte, North Carolina. We currently have a presence in Union County and also in the Outer Banks and Dare County. We're currently working on projects in Gaston County, Cleveland, Catawba and Caldwell County. We also have a presence in Greenville County, South Carolina and Lexington County. Our company has recently approved projects across five other states. A couple in the Midwest, a couple in the West and one in the Northeast. We haven't gone public with those locations quite yet, but those announcements should be coming out soon. One thing that we pride ourselves on at Ripple is making sure that we have a good relationship with the localities that we're going into. It's important that your administration knows who we are, how to get ahold of us. I know when construction is involved, residents have questions or there's concerns about notification. And you each should have gotten a packet that explains a little bit more in depth about our company, but you'll find an example of a door hanger that's in the front of your packet as an example of what goes on residents' homes when we're beginning construction. A number of those door hangers have gone ahead and been put out. Where we're doing more immediate construction, additional door hangers will be put out as we approach new construction areas within the city. Paige has all of my contact information and my team's contact information. So should you get any questions from residents, please do not hesitate to send them our way. I believe your administration is also working to put some notices out more widespread for your there to be noticed about the construction coming. So. This project includes about 2,600 homes or passings within your city. So just so you have an idea of what the scale of the project is. But I know that just wanted to give you a high-level introduction to who we are. And if you had any questions this evening, happy to answer them. Some others come about my contact information to the front of the packet.
Anyone have a question?
I may have several.
Feel free.
As far as the installation, everyone, and Brian, you may be going to put more of this out so that our citizens will understand that it's on the street right of way.
Yes.
It will be digging in the street right of way.
Correct.
Okay. Now, if the homeowner wants to get a connection, you will be trenching to their homes. Is that correct?
I'm going to let, this is Deidre Wilcox who deals with the construction piece.
So my name's Deidre Hickox. I am the permitting manager for Ripple. So I have already met with Mr. Dalton here with our plans and gone through them all. Once a resident decides that they want Ripple Fiber, they will reach out to our team. We will set up a meeting with them to come to their house to install. Yes, once that meeting happens to install to their house, there will be trenching in their yard. We do bury that hopefully deep enough that there is no issues if they have aerification on their lawn. Mine's been cut, but we fix it right away, I promise. Things like that where if there is an issue, we come out and fix it right away as well. We sod that back up or seed it. It's, it's not very, it's very minimal construction in their yard itself.
Okay, is there a time limit? Can you have the, can you have the trenching done and maybe connect later on? Is there a time limit there?
There is not. It is a one-day process. So as we're going construction in the right of way, they will not trench the house at that time. We have install tacks that do it during install. And it's, they literally dig just a quick little
Okay.
jump skip to the side of the house to put the service inside.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is this done in connection with the Quantum Initiative Nationwide?
Mayor, Council, I will say, y'all did start construction last week, I guess, at BP. If you've seen, seen them out there, that's where they started and that's where your, your primary box, I guess you could say, is going to be placed. But that's the only box that gets placed throughout the empire.
That's the biggest box we place. We do place smaller boxes. They're smaller than even a power box that you would see to provide power in a neighborhood. So they're not very noticeable. And then everything else is the same level as the ground if there is any box, other boxes placed.
I do have another question.
Absolutely.
There, there is some fiber in the city of Cheriville. Is this correct? Through, through other companies?
Yes. So AT&T does have a small presence within the city. We do not install in compete of other fiber providers. So most of ours is in areas that you will not, are, you do not have fiber as an option.
I have a friend that's on 150 West and he said it was in front of his house. Okay, thank you very much. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I was going to let you know what we discussed when we met. They have 14 different sections throughout Cheriville that they're going to put in. So they've, they've received 14 different permits for those sections. So as they start doing a section, that's when we hope, we get notification from them, hey, next week, we're going to start doing the construction in this area and that's when we will send it out through our outlets, Facebook, you know, website to let citizens know Ripple Fiber will be in the area starting to do construction.
And we are not touching Main Street at all.
Yeah, and, and I told her that's.
That was a very, made very clear. And I went back and said, we're not touching Main Street. I don't.
We gotta work in the alleyways somehow.
Yeah. So we are, we've worked around everything. We're not touching Main Street.
So if somebody wants your service, they'll just contact y'all. You'll come out, you'll run it to their house. They can plug in and go, right? That easy. All right, for monthly fee?
Um, there are a couple of different options. Ben, do you have the, I don't know the specifics on that part. It's not my area of expertise.
So. You, I'll just say real quick.
Yeah, I looked at the packages here.
Those are new packages. It just came out this week, actually. So we have a 500 symmetrical service, one gig and two gig, and then the pricing's up there.
How long have you been on the mission?
We're going on our third year. So we've kind of considered ourselves as a startup company. And we're transitioning into that more mature company. We have about 160 employees right now. We continue to grow leaps and bounds every single week. A lot of our leadership have come from larger providers and have really brought their expertise to our business. So it's, it's a, it's a great environment, very collaborative. And again, one thing that we really do stress is having a partnership with our localities. So yes, we'll be very present during the construction phase, but we will also be present and available post-construction completion. We want to be long-term partners with our local administrations.
And let me, let me say this too, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm saying this the wrong way, but the difference between this and say, some of the providers you have now for internet, if you go into a neighborhood, everybody is sharing that, that service, that provider. So if everybody's on at the same time, it goes, gets slower. With fiber, fiber, everybody has a direct connect to their house. So you shouldn't have that problem.
Thank you all. Andy, do you have any follow-up questions?
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, um, this time we have, we have a section of citizens to be heard. Did anyone sign up to be heard? Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Your comments will be held to three minutes. Okay, I don't think, no one is here. Okay. All right, consideration of resolution to support funding the AstroTurf for Buck Frayley Field. City Manager Brian Dalton is going to lead us through this.
Yes, uh, Council. This says, if you'll look at page 18, the American Legion, as you all know, over the past year has completed several upgrades to Buck Frayley Field. There's a new scoreboard, there's new fencing, there's a new batting cage, several other, you know, little fencing around bullpen areas. That enabled us to host the 24 and the 25 North Carolina American Legion State Tournament. Now we're looking at going into a partnership with the American Legion and supporting them in putting turf on the baseball field. Currently, the total price of the project is $487,000. Mr. Patrick O'Leary has contributed $200,000 towards this project. The American Legion was going to put up $50,000 towards the project. And then the city of Cheriville was gonna, was gonna fund the other $237,000 on a loan basis. And the American Legion will then pay that back as funds become available. I'm not ready to go public right now with anybody that we're working with, but there is some, some other organizations that we are working with at this time for future funds towards this project. So we could get the money paid back very quickly, or it could take a little longer time. We don't know for sure. But if you'll look, uh, page 18 and 19 is the company that is looking to install the turf, that is Geo Surfaces. And just to make you aware, this is the same company that did the turf on all four Lincoln County High School football fields. Uh, and if you go to their website, you can see that they've done, uh, projects throughout the whole country. Colleges, they did Garden Web, they did Catawba College. Some of those type of places have recently had this work completed. And if you look actually on page 21, that is a picture of a field that they recently completed in Tennessee. And this is, I guess, the new and upcoming type of turf. It's the Geo Cool. So you know, a lot of times now, if you watch a game and it's a turf field, you'll see like black pellets. When the ball hits it or somebody's foot drags, this turf, you will not see that. There will not be the rubber within the turf. So what they do is they put the turf down and then basically they put this stuff called Geo Cool in it and it looks like sand. It's what it looks like. And it keeps the turf on average 30 degrees cooler than the old style of turf. But that is a, that is a picture on page 21 of, like I said, the turf that we're looking at putting on Frayley Field. And if you look on page 22, that is a diagram showing where exactly we will put the turf. It'll be the entire infield area and then it will be down both the left and right field foul line. So the only thing left to maintain will be the grass and outfield. You'll never have to strike another line. You don't have to do, you don't have to drag the field. You don't have to buy dirt. You don't have to do any of that anymore. Now, the only thing we were going to leave dirt is the mound. The mound would remain a natural surface. What other questions you may have? Well, let me say this. We do have a meeting tomorrow with Gaston County Schools Facilities Director because they obviously need to sign off on this. You know, I don't see a problem with it, but we will have that meeting tomorrow to move forward from there.
Okay, and explain some of the benefit of this, just like when we had those torrential downpours during the tournament. And I know the World Series had the same problem.
Well, that's, that's the big thing is obviously if you remember the state tournament this year, there was a lot of rain. So if the turf gets put down, we no longer have that problem. If it rains, as soon as the rain stops, you know, you're good to go within a few minutes. Where we had to stop games, had to, you know, that's another experience. We had to put thousands of dollars worth of turf on the field to get it playable. So there's just a lot more involved. And then the other benefit is obviously coaches no longer have to worry about mowing, cutting the grass, dragging the field, putting a line down. It's all ready to play. So it enables us to have more tournaments. So for example, you know, next year, the, the American Legion is already scheduled to have the Senior State Tournament. If we get this turf, we're looking to try to get the Junior State Tournament as well. We could go back-to-back weeks because you don't have the, the problems of getting the field ready and worrying about the rain as much. The World Series in Shelby, they did have the same problem, obviously, with the rain this year in the World Series. You know, they were playing games trying to at two in the morning sometimes. So there's a lot of benefits to the turf. And I mean, if you look around, that's, that's where it's going. That's where everything's going. Uh, this turf here does have a 12-year unlimited warranty on it. So that's a good thing. You shouldn't have to worry about it. You know, there might be like two or three years, you might have to come out and replace like the batter's box, specifically the right-handed batter's box. Cause obviously it gets used a lot more. But the way they, the way they do that is they leave you the material behind. When they finish the project, the material's left here. So in two years, if you need to replace the batter's box there, you call them, they come out here, the, the materials are here, they change out the batter's box, you move on. You know, the big thing is if you look in Gastonia, just yesterday, I went and watched my nephew play in a tournament in Gastonia at the Fuse. That field is all turf. So you have probably six, seven teams there and they're all playing all day long. You know, big crowds and they just play game after game after game. They don't have to worry about the field maintenance between games. So there's, there's tons of benefits to it as far as being productive and being able to keep games moving.
There's also the possibility if it rains out in Shelby, then the World Series could send games to Cheriville, right?
That could always be a possibility if we have turf. And if you look at, you know, we had to do something similar this year in the state tournament. We had so much rain, we had to go play two games at Sims Legion Park, which does have turf. And then we brought the games back here that afternoon after we had time to work on the field. So it's, it's a, it's a huge benefit. It's, it's something that, you know, we're all shooting for, not just, you know, American Legion baseball, but primarily American Legion baseball. We can have more tournaments. You know, and this is part of the plan to hopefully get the Southeast Regionals awarded to us starting in '26. But the other thing is, is a college coach was contacted and said, you've seen the, the renovations we've made as of right now. You've seen the wall, you've seen the scoreboard, batting cage. If we. If we put turf, would you be willing to entertain the idea of coming here and playing a college baseball game? And he said, absolutely. If y'all get turf, I am interested in coming to Cherub and play a college baseball.
And you get a lot of those northern teams that like to come down south and and play series before, but yeah, so we could get that kind of business as well.
I I specifically heard one college coach say, I will definitely come and get a game scheduled there.
So the economic impact for citizens, city of Cherub, our people here would be pretty great.
I think it can be, absolutely. Uh you know, you're gonna have all all types of things, not just, like I said, the American Legion, but you know, if you look at the Southeast Regional. If we can get all of this and get all, you know, we know we've got more work to be done as well, not just this, you know, we need the canopy and we need some of that. But if we get awarded something like that, that's how you get a hotel probably interested in talking to you about it. But you can't get a hotel without anything for them to come here for. You gotta have something for them to come here for if you wanna get that hotel to be interested.
Yeah, I I look at this as an investment in economic development. That we're gonna get back.
That's right. That's right.
So I think it's it's a win-win.
The American Legion and Yanceys got involved. Uh today, we kind of got an agreement that we're looking at to have them sign on with. Uh obviously, we can't put them under, you know, too strict a stipulations because there's some things we just don't know. But we are having an agreement drafted that we can all agree upon and have them sign it so we can go in partnership with this.
Okay, I don't think there's any need to read the resolution pretty much. It explained it line by line as it is.
So I'll make a motion to approve the res-
First, um Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh I'm sure that you've probably taken care of this, but I would just like to make sure maybe that it's in the minutes. That this financial arrangement between the city and the Legion is is uh approved. By the local government commission.
Absolutely. I mean, we we have the ability, and I'm gonna give you an example. Uh I think I told you today. The city of Gastonia gave Gaston County Schools seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To turf the new Greer Middle School football field, for the reason that based off their internal local agreement, that they have the ability to use. That football field once it's turf. And I agree with uh the city manager of Gastonia. You know, anything that's right there in the center of town like that, you want it to look nice. And I feel the same way about our baseball field right on Highway one fifty. So absolutely, that it's fine.
But yeah, the financials are are fine, and uh you might want us also tell us about the inter-local agreement.
Uh yes, we do have an inter-local agreement. It was a, it's three years at a time. It automatically renewed again in September of twenty-two, I believe. But the inter-local agreement is where. The the school system, if if the school system is not using their facilities, the city has the right to use that facility. And then vice versa, you know, just like we provide tennis courts for middle school or high school tennis, boys and girls. You know, we provide a a baseball field for middle school baseball to play on. Up until this year, we always provided a field for the middle school softball to play on. So that inter-local agreement is what covers them using our facilities and us using their facilities. Uh there's also on page four of the inter-local agreement, there's also uh some verbiage in there where they have the right. Based off our approval to improve our facilities. And then we have the right based off their approval to improve their facilities, which is what we would be doing here with this turf. It's all in the inter-local agreement. And like I said, that that renews it on three-year terms, and it automatically renewed last on September of twenty-two.
That's the same agreement that the World Series has with the city of Shelby.
And I think even though this agreement is gonna be with the American Legion, funds can come from other places. To pay this money back. It doesn't just have to come. And some of that's already in the works.
And like I said, it's just, we don't know a hundred percent, so I I I wouldn't wanna say that those funds.
This is money that came from the bond, is that correct?
Well, technically, what we would do is uh no, we would not use the bond funds from, because the bond funds are. For facilities that are specifically in our name. So we will not use bond funds from it. We'll just pull money from our account. We'll then have a line item showing that, hey, we've loaned out two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and then as it gets paid down. Paid back, we put that back into that account. General, you might as well say general fund, yes, sir.
Dick Dixie signed off on it, we're.
Yeah.
Dixie and I talked about this a lot, and uh the bond funds did come up, but with it not being. A facility that's in the city of Cherub's name, only there being an inter-local agreement. We didn't feel like we should use bond funds for that.
All right, so I'll make a motion to.
So I think we have to be clear on when we're making loans. There's a lot of rules right around. Government making loans, so it has to be for a public purpose. And it has to be, since we're giving these funds to a private entity, it has to be for a program or service or activity that we. It's a nonprofit, right? But then the field is. It's county, okay, so it's through our inter-law. Uh okay, so it's through our inter-local agreement, okay. It still needs to be that um public purpose that we would otherwise service or perform as that activity. So is that is that something that we would otherwise do? Would we, would the city be involved in that? Or is it more of a county?
What are you asking?
For like the baseball fields and things like that. I mean, the city would do that.
Resolution, that has to be part of.
We we have, it needs to say that it's. Uh the the funds are for the provision of a service or performance of a function or activity that we are otherwise authorized by law to perform.
We'll get that through the inter-local agreement.
Yeah, that's what I'm, if I'm following you right, that's what I think, is the inter-local agreement allows us. To work with the American Legion to provide this for the community.
But I think the loan is the piece I'm hung up on.
Well, then how do you do, how do you, how do you just, how do you save what Gastonia did with Gaston County Schools?
Are they loaning the money?
Well, I think they probably gave the money.
That's what I think is. So I think I, when you, when we talked, I think I told you wrong. I think that the loan is more sticky than to just give them the money.
So do we need to table this till, do we need to table it till our work session?
Yeah, you, I mean, you could give the money anticipating that the revenues will be brought back into the city through visitors, tax dollars. Things like that, as opposed to repayment of any kind of loan.
I don't know that it actually says loan, does it?
I don't know. So do you think we just need to take that part out, and then as the American Legion gives money back, we just do it that way?
I think that the American Legion could just like voluntarily.
That's what I'm saying, voluntarily gave the money back.
Don't call it a loan.
Because there there's too many situations like this, like I know the city of Lincoln has done it, I know uh the city of Gastonia has done it. Well, they buy restaurants. And then they rent them. That happens all the time. So I know it's a, it's possible.
Could it be handled, but you're gonna uh have a document with the American Legion. I mean, it could kind of be handled kind of on the backside with that. And not use the word loan.
I mean, they could make a pledge.
Yes.
To commit funds to the city, um but I don't think.
Just need to change the wording on the bottom of that resolution. I just wanna make sure, yeah.
No, I I absolutely counsel on that. Yes, I agree. Yeah, we wanna do it the right way.
And you know, my thing too is, you know, we've talked about this with commissioners. It should, you know, obviously, that used to be city of Cherub property. You know that as well as anybody. All of that property used to belong to the city of Cherub when it was city school.
City school, yes.
So there's talk now where if if Gaston County ever does build another high school. All that property automatically comes back to the city of Cherub. You know, the baseball field, the gym, the football field. It comes back because the city of Cherub, who built that? Who who did it?
Then that would certainly be repayment, right, to have your improvement back home.
Let's just change it so it says.
No, I think, I I mean, I think Brian did a good job. I mean, just, I would just take out the.
Take out the word loan.
Exactly. Helping with funds.
Supports helping fund.
Okay, exactly.
And then we just have to have an agreement.
As donations come in, and they would be donated to all to the city.
They pledged their money. Okay, is everybody okay with that?
We need a motion to change that. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. With the change in the very bottom paragraph to state, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Cherub. Supports helping fund. Helping the Cherub American Legion fund having the turf installed, right? Make that sound good, Paige.
I'll do it. Okay, got a first, a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, uh the next item on the agenda is consideration of the resolution. To surplus city fund. City manager Brian Dalton.
Yes, uh this is the, these are the decorative lampposts that if you remember were on Main Street before we did the street skate project. So what I'm asking is, uh I'm wanting to think, there was a lot of weeds there, you can see the pictures, but I think there's about twenty-eight of them that we have out there. So I'm wanting to designate those as uh surplus property to put on gov deals. Now, we are gonna use some of them. We're gonna use uh four right around the cherry pit there. We're gonna have four of them installed. If you've seen the cone out there, that's where that area is where they poured the new sidewalk. Where we've already got the wiring uh installed, where we will put one of the light posts, and we'll put those down. Uh First Street to uh Mulberry as we get the rest of the sidewalk completed. Uh so I, and we're probably gonna end up putting a couple at the gym before it's over too. Uh so once we use what we're gonna use, we, I'm asking that you surplus the rest and allow us to put them on gov deals.
Can you buy the lamps to fit them? Do we have the lamps?
Yes, if you'll look on.
I can't see them.
Well, I think I think Ben has those maybe in his office. This is just what was out there in the field. Uh but I believe he's got the lamps as well in the office.
Yes, a shame to see it that way, so it's great. You're gonna be able to use some of it.
I mean, obviously, we'll paint them.
Okay, so this resolution is just authorizing the disposition of ones that we do not need to put them on gov deal, so. I so moved. Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, you're good. Okay, the next item is consideration for change of venue for the work session for September the twenty-fourth. City manager, you want to. I think this is gonna be, Steve Patton is gonna be directing it, but if you'll explain it.
What that is, is uh we're gonna try to move the work session to the fire department because he wants to do a PowerPoint presentation for. The vacant building ordinance that we've been working on for the past two years, and basically it's ready for for council to view and and make a decision.
Okay. Anyone have a problem with September the twenty-fourth? Is that agreeable with everyone?
Yep, I'll make a motion that we change our work session scheduled for September twenty-fourth to the Cherub Fire Department. A second, ma'am.
Is that gonna be at five-thirty or? Okay. All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, all right, consideration of annex petition regarding Dollar Tree. There in Lincoln, we have a voluntary annexation. Annexation request from Dollar Tree and Richard England's going to lead us through it.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'll just go through the pages while the time that you have. Just as information on Wednesday, September the fourth, the owner of twenty-three oh one. Lincoln Highway, which is gonna be the new Dollar Tree store, they applied for voluntary annexation to this parcel. Page twenty-six in your agenda is the petition checklist to start the process of the voluntary annexation. Which we've completed all that. And as information, the parcel is contiguous to the city limits. Because Ace Hardware is to the west, and it will be touching it, and it's, so it's just a continuation of the city limits. Page twenty-seven through thirty is the uh voluntary annexation petition that the property owner. Filled out, and he paid his fee of four hundred dollars to have it advertised in the paper. Let's see, page twenty-eight. At the top, we uh you need to change that, or it will be changed by the city clerk that the owners declare. That there is a vested right in the property, they bought it. And then you come down halfway, it's got the deed reference. He had indicated it wrong on his application. It should be book number fifty-four ninety-two and page four eighty-nine. That's been changed by our city clerk also. And out of those four pages, that's the only changes that we made to it. Page thirty-one and thirty-two. That's the copy of the North Carolina General Warranty D, which has been notarized. As part of the North Carolina General Statutes, we include all this into asking for the voluntary annexation. Page thirty-three is just a copy of the map. You see the highlighted Daniella. That was the parcel that was cut out of the Mr. Wise's Wise Electric Control to the east. So that is now the parcel, and you can see on it, it shows the, you know, the amount of feet. Around each edge. It shows the measurement of all the lot lines to the west, Ace Hardware. Which is Ferguson Rental LLC, and the other properties adjacent to it have a light blue line. That's, that light blue line is showing the city limits exist now. So from now on to the east will be city limits once it is annexed in. Page thirty-four, this was pulled from GIS. It's just an additional map. Showing that the parcel belongs to Piedmont Companies. And there again, you can see the parcel lines and how wide they are. Page thirty-five is another description of the parcel prior to the final description and measurement. That were on page twenty-one of the General Warranty D. And now you come to the three, last three pages that were on the agenda. Page thirty-six is a resolution directing the city clerk to investigate the submitted petition under the North Carolina General Statute. One six zero eight dash thirty-one. This page has been, will like to be discussed with the city council and voted on for the city clerk in my office to investigate. Page thirty-seven is a certificate of sufficiency certifying that the city clerk has investigated the annexation. And she's already signed it and put her seal on it. And then the last page is a resolution fixing a date for the public hearing and. City clerk and I are requesting the date of October the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four from city council.
Okay, all right, uh council, you all see the resolution? council, you all see the resolution directing clerk to investigate a petition received under GS one sixty-eight dash thirty-one. I need your consideration as to, we need to vote there as to accepting the resolution so that city clerk can do her investigation. I need to vote. I make the motion. Second, anybody?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh.
Okay, then consideration of the resolution to set the date as Richard has indicated. Uh, for any questions, we have to have, set a date for the public hearing. His recommendation is that of October the fourteenth. So I need to vote as to set the date for the public hearing. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Richard, thank you very much. All right, at this time, do we have any other business that needs to come before this council?
I have one thing I'd like to.
Okay.
And you know, as the old saying goes, you hate to beat a dead horse. But I guess most of the complaints I get from citizens is the condition of our streets and our roads. And now that we are in a new budget year, I was just, uh, wondering when we could begin pave, repaving a street or whatever, uh, Brian has on, on his list and, uh, maybe could get started before winter. So can you help me, Brian?
Yes ma'am. Ms. Hobus, we actually, uh, we have M Street and I will give y'all a copy of this. We have, uh, M Street, uh, there at Highway one fifty to Main Street, which is twenty-four thousand two hundred square feet of paving. We have Stires Street. If you go to Stires right there at Ballard, we're looking at going from Stires and Ballard all the way to Old Post. You know, it turns into Melville up closer to Old Post. Uh, but we're gonna try to go from, uh, Stires to Old Post and that'd be thirty-one thousand two hundred square feet. Uh, we're looking at going at, uh, Rudisal and Main Street down near the swimming pool, all the way around to Pine, which is another nineteen thousand eight hundred square feet. And then we're gonna go from Pine back out to Main Street and it's thirty-seven thousand six hundred square feet. Uh, so what we're doing is those four are gonna be the priorities. And those four, we're gonna try to put out for bid here in the next week or two. And, uh, get some bids in and try to get those completed here before winter comes. And then based off where we're, where we stand after those four, what I would like to do is next spring, if funds are available, try to push to look at some of, probably some of Academy and try to start picking sections. I mean, obviously Academy is a very long road. It would cost a lot of money to do the entire road. So we'll probably start picking sections and go and, uh, try to start chipping away.
Do we have a start date for the drain under Pink?
Don't have a official start date. The pipe is, four pipes are in. Uh, I don't think we got the boxes in yet.
We don't have some boxes to be built, because it's gonna be a bad house.
Okay, okay, thank you.
He told me originally two to twelve weeks, but it could be sooner. So I haven't heard anything back from him yet.
And we'll be in touch with the schools about the traffic.
We've already talked on numerous times and it's, it's gonna be about a two-week project that we'll have to tear up. I would probably say that's the largest pipe we have in town anywhere. It's a hundred and twenty-eight foot long. A hundred and twenty. It's the largest pipe we probably have in town. So Mike will have to take out the hole because it's, and you can see the road. If you're, if you're heading down Pink on the left side there at six where it splits, you can see where the road is starting to collapse.
Mm-hmm. All right, with these, these are big projects here. What about, are we able to still do some patching where we've got some?
We're still doing that.
We're still doing patching.
Patching has probably not been as fast as we'd like on some things right now, but it's-
Yeah, we've had some other problems.
Well, the gas company's been doing a lot of work, putting in different gas lines. So Chad's been tied up Piedmont Paving, doing a lot of that. But he actually patched some roads, uh, probably about a week ago.
Yeah, Colonial got done.
Colonial, he was doing some of those. But he has been doing a lot of sidewalk work here lately. Uh, Main Street, for example, uh, we got the fire hydrant fixed that had been leaking air on Main Street. Gas company done some work. So he got that sidewalk back poured. He got the sidewalk back poured there at, uh, Academy and Stires. Uh, so he's been dealing with a lot of that lately, but hopefully, uh, we'll continue to get more patching done.
Sounds good. Anyone else know anything?
Make any progress on getting that parking lot at Depot, strike?
I hadn't really thought about it, I'm sorry.
It's a mess whenever we have a festival.
I'll be honest.
Football games, it's gonna be a problem too.
I noticed that the other day too.
I'll, uh, I'll see if I can get in touch because I actually called, uh, the other day to see about getting, uh, who would put the handicap signs up there at Cherry Pit, see about getting that striped. I'll see if we can get that included.
Yeah, because it's fine, but then like you said, you have a football game or they're parked everywhere.
No rhyme or reason. That's not to say that they won't. Okay, anyone else anything? Staff?
Uh, nothing further from staff. That was the one thing I was gonna update you on, so.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a second? Third? Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
Ah.